Good evening and welcome to our last meeting in October. Appreciate everyone being here tonight on this beautiful fall afternoon. We have also folks watching us on our Electric City Television and we have a pretty good crowd here tonight in our council chambers. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Beatrice Thompson in respect of the flyer, be led by Mayor Pro Tem Rick Lockridge. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to enjoy this beautiful day. We thank you for allowing us to assemble in these council chambers once more. We are honored for the privilege to serve our communities and we thank you for that privilege. As we deliberate the business of our city, we ask for your guidance that we may do those things and make decisions that are wise, honorable, and pleasing in your sight. We thank you for more than those who were with us tonight, either in the council chambers or by television. We thank you for coming. Help us to work together for the good of all our concerned citizens. As we continue to experience the traumatizing effects of wars, disease, and other devastating things that brought our country and its citizens, help us to be consoled by the power of your blessings and your healings and your protection. Thank you, Lord, for our council members, for our mayor, our city employees, our community. Bless our country and our state and our nation. Thank you for your everlasting guidance and everlasting goodness to all of us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the busy republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into the meat of our meeting, I'm gonna ask Chief Horn to come up and he has a couple of things, a recognition and a swearing in ceremony. Chief?
We appreciate your time tonight. We have two items to have a promotion and a swearing in. First, I'd like to call up firefighter Richie Earl. Give you a little history of Richie Earl. We've just had a vacancy come up in the engineer ranks from retirement and Richie will be filling that. Firefighter Richie Earl was hired October 20th, 2011. He was the top candidate on our recent engineer promotional process, which included a practical and written exam. He did very well on it. As you can see by his ribbon, he's also a member of our honor guard and he has completed all the requirements to be promoted to the rank of engineer. And Richie, on behalf of the CEO of Anderson and the Fire Department, I'd like to congratulate you on your promotion. This is Chevis Sexton. Chevis is a 2012 graduate of Westside High School. He's IFSCAC accredited in firefighter one and numerous other firefighting courses through the South Carolina Fire Academy. He has previous firefighting experience with the Holman Park Fire Department and worked with the Fort Rescue Squad. He has successfully completed all of his probationary requirements and is qualified to be sworn in tonight. Chevis, you will raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Chevis Sexton.
I, Chevis Sexton.
Do solemnly swear to do my duty.
Do solemnly swear to do my duty.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
Compassion.
Courage.
Courage and integrity.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
Uphold the law, rules, and regulations.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of South Carolina.
State of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson.
And the city of Anderson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
In particular, we lost someone who served the city well in a capacity. And I'm gonna ask Councilmember John Roberts to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Last week, of course, we, a lot of you know, we lost McLester McDowell. When he retired in 91, Mr. McDowell, Mac, as most of us know him, served on countless numbers of boards and touched the lives of a lot of people, including my own. And he's truly gonna be missed. This community has lost a true servant and volunteer and I can't say enough about Mac other than he will be missed. So thank you for that, Mayor.
Thank you. The minutes of our October 13th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, the first paragraph, typo under planning, transportation director, could you please make that change? It's got P-A-N-N-I-N-G, planning.
Thank you. I actually read that and missed it. So, anything else? I entertain a motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
First by Mr. Roberts, Buck Roberts, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of October 13th passed unanimously. We have three items of old business and the first item is request second and third reading of ordinance 14-15 amended to 2013-2014 budget. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was some good discussion on this matter at the last meeting and hopefully you got a letter that we sent from our auditors that would look at maybe a new budget amendment process and we'll begin that on November the 12th when the Finance Committee meets to look at the audit and also consider a different type of budget process amendment. We're looking at probably a quarterly basis. But for tonight, we'd still ask you to give second and third reading of these amendments that are actually amending the last fiscal year. And let me go over those real quickly. The general fund is increasing by 962,788. I won't go back through the details, but majority of those are grants or such things, cemetery expansions, which you approved during the course of the last fiscal year. The others are the hospitality fee fund and that is basically a transfer to get Renn Park done. Again, something that you approved. And the other one, the bigger one, the 967,000 for community development, even though there's an allotment each year from community development, typically a grant year takes about three years to expend it all, so it has to be rolled from year to year. So those are, in summary, the amendments for the 2013-14 budget. And again, if you'll approve those on second and third reading tonight, we'll have the Finance Committee review your audit. Those will be reflected in that on the 11th and then you'll see the audit the second meeting in November.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I move that we adopt it on the second reading.
First by Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts, John Roberts. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
I make a motion we approve it on third and final reading.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our next item, old business, is requests second and third reading of ordinance 14-16 to rezone approximately 15 acres, generally in the West Franklin Street-Doolie Avenue area from RM10 multifamily residential to a PDD, which is a planned development district. Mr. Moore?
Again, just a little bit of a summary. This is Homes of Hope, which has purchased this site and will be constructing up to 80 units. These will be single-family, multifamily, and they are next to the Westside Community Center. Don was here, Don Ogles, the executive director here last time. I appreciate Don and his staff, we all do. They work very closely with Dr. Thompson and the Westside Community Center and the folks who live in that area. So not only is it 80 units, they will include amenities such as common space, a playground, community garden, walking trails, and the units will consist of three bedrooms, a mix of one-story and two-story. Again, meets all your guidelines, Planning Commission approved it, Dr. Thompson's on board and her community, so we'd recommend that you approve this on second and third reading.
Thank you. We've talked about it last meeting. Any other questions or comments?
I move that we approve this on second reading.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge, Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
I move the approval on the third and final reading.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Looking forward to that development. I guess so, start in January or so, I think. Great. Our last item, old business, is request second and third reading of ordinance 14-17 to rezone 1341 East River Street from RM10 multifamily residential to limited office. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, there was some good discussion on what this zoning should be. There was a recommendation to maybe go a step lower to, that would be the limited office and still allow this office space for the Anderson Housing Authority. So what this is, the staff went back and reviewed it. Certainly, a limited office is a viable option to construct an office space for the Anderson Housing Authority and if at some point in the future, it always gives that option to go to another step up. And it does limit some of the things that could be done on that site without your approval. So with those changes, Mr. Mayor and council, we'd recommend you approve this on second and third reading. Again, be an office space for the Anderson Housing Authority. And Councilman Stewart, I believe, has been in touch with Jeff and those at the Housing Authority and indicated that he was supportive of this matter.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
Make a motion that we approve it.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion we approve it on third and final reading.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge, Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Move right into new business and our first item of new business is request consideration of a referral to the Planning Commission, a petition to annex and zone to neighborhood commercial approximately 7.25 acres, generally located at the northwestern corner of East Greenville Street and Reed Road. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and council, the developers of this property have signed your sewer service and restrictive covenant agreement to bring the property in the city. I think it's pretty well-known that this is a Walmart neighborhood market, 40,000 square feet, so that's a grocery store, small gas station, and there are probably some other office spaces for future development. This is located generally at the corner of Greenville Street and Reed. So if you go out there, let me go back a little bit in the way of history. This process began with the county. It's certainly been permitted by the county and then moving forward under them. That's why you see the construction before you actually annex it, but before it goes online on water and sewer, it would be in the city. So we're pleased that the developers are interested in being in the city and receiving those services. Certainly a nice bump for the city's tax and business license base. So we'd recommend you refer this to the Planning Commission and it'll be heard on November the 4th.
Thank you. I entertain a motion.
Question.
Mr. Stewart?
Just curious, from a planning standpoint, on that stretch of East Greenville Street, if you start down near the Governors and, but probably go all the way up to Reed Road, there's about eight gas stations in between that small amount of area. We don't limit the number, because I can just see some of them going out of business pretty soon and some's gonna be vacant there because there's just so many gas stations in that small amount of area right there. Just...
You said this zone, general commercial, and whatever's permitted, they can do it and certainly this seems to...
Free enterprise system.
Yep, this is the kind of the new model, I guess, for...
I know Ingalls did it, kind of with the Ingalls and then, you know, you had Sphinx and you got Shell and all those other ones.
And you got the QTs up there also, yep.
Just curious.
Just curious.
I make a motion, Mayor, we send this to Planning?
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes on to the Planning Commission to come back to us. Our second item of new business is request consideration of the accommodations tax, the ATAX Advisory Committee recommendations. Mr. Moore?
Now, Mr. Mayor and council, Linda's gonna come forward. She works a lot closer with this project, but in the end, this is your annual allocation of the accommodation tax for the different projects that do, as we say, put heads in beds for our community. So she'll be covering the committee's recommendations and the funding and the details.
Thank you, John. The purpose certainly of these dollars is for us to be able to direct monies from those collections that help promote and develop tourism throughout the city. This year, I'm pleased to tell you that we have more dollars to allocate than we did last year, about, a little bit better than 9,500 more dollars this year. That's a good sign. It's a sign that shows our hospitality and those heads in beds are on the increase. This year, we do have 29 applications. There are several of them that I will focus on, which are new applications. As you all know, there are a number of really good projects that are on this list every year that we see fit to fund because of the economic benefit, tourism benefit that is generated. What I'd like to tell you is that there are about eight new applications this year. The total amount of money that we have to allocate is $105,643 and as always, we have more requests for dollars than we have dollars available. The, first of all, I'd really like to thank those members of the committee. Shanice Williams from the Quality Inn, Cindy Suddles from the Holiday Inn, John Doolittle representing the hospitality industry, Larry Lynette from hospitality, Vicki Culler representing the cultural community, and Summer Fredette and Chris Glenn, both are your at-large appointees, but they also represent the hospitality industry. One of the things as the committee considers these requests, they focus their particular interest on the likelihood of continuing to leverage those dollars so that we do continue to see those dollars grow. And as you know, most of these dollars are for specifically the advertising and promotion expenses and they, each applicant who is awarded funding through these ATAX dollars must submit their documentation showing how their particular event or promotion benefited our community. In particular, a new one from the Anderson CVB is the Rev 3 Triathlon. It's not new to this community. It is a new application this year and they're requesting $5,000 in accommodations tax money and the committee recommended two. I will have to say that generally speaking, of all of the 29 applications, everybody who applied was, is being recommended to receive something, even if not all of what they asked for. The two, three more from the Lights of Hope, which are new applications this year. One is the Traditional Lights of Hope Show. One is a new event, which is the Upstate Holiday Show, to be held at the Civic Center. It is booth rentals, a holiday shopping event to be held November the 6th through the 9th. The other one from the Lights of Hope is the Upstate Regional Drill Championship in connection with the Pendleton High School. It is a junior ROTC championship event. The Downtown Development Commission has two new applications this year. One is to be held in Renn Park using our new venue in a new way. As you know, a lot of things that we're trying to do in the downtown are things that are geared at generating new entertainment options or new attractions. And this is a particular one that we'd like to try this year, very akin to Greenville and other communities who have done ice skating rinks, but our wrinkle that we would like to try this year is a holiday snow attraction where you would, we would propose to have a flurry of snow falling in the Carolina Renn Park during our annual holiday celebrations the month of December. The second new activity for the Downtown Development Commission would be Shakespeare in the Park. And one of the committee members commented that any city that has truly reached the elevation of being a city needs to have art in their city and Shakespeare in the Park can be something that we've not offered before, but it can be a very entertaining opportunity for us in Renn Park. The last two that are new are related to the National Heritage Corridor and the Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail being the first one. It is their marketing plan and you will remember that the quilt, Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail is actually a self-guided tour through Anderson, Oconee, and Pickens as far as the upstate is concerned. And it is specifically to take advantage of the cultural and natural resources and the historic resources in the, from the mountains to the sea. That's what the Heritage Corridor is supposed to be. And the quilt blocks that you see in various places around downtown most especially, including in Renn Pavilion, are the quilt blocks that are part of this guided tour. The second one having to do with the same thing is the Prickly Fingers and Electric City Quilt Guilds, their Anderson area quilt show to be held in, weekend in August, the 21st through the 23rd. Last year, this event was held at the Westside Community Center. So those are the highlights of the new applications that are before you and I'll be happy to answer any questions on any of the others that the committee thinks long and hard about the dollars they have to allocate and we are grateful for their participation in allocating these funds.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good update. Any questions?
I just have one. It's more of a comment than a, just to, as a side note, I guess the 14 of the 29 received 100% of what they asked for. So I mean, that's definitely up to...
That's pretty strong. Yes, it is.
Good point. Anything else?
I'd just say that I'm pleased that everybody who made a request got something. Yes, indeed. This is good.
You know, the comments, I entertain a motion.
I move.
First by, who did that? Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you again to the committee members. Our last item of new business is request consideration of a contract with Matrix Construction Company Incorporated for eMERGE at the garage. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, this bears some background to go back to how we got here. I was gonna say it's an evolution, but an evolution implies it evolved and it's been on a pretty fast track, so I'm not sure we evolved other than just got there very quickly. If you remember back in the retreat, the council was discussing what to do with the office space and how to market and our whole economic development initiative. And about that time, we were fortunate to have a combination of, and you were gonna spend $300,000 in fund balance to get it to a warm shell status in hopes that maybe you could market it for rental or purchase. About that time, we were fortunate to have the team of Craig Kinley and Arlene Young come together, make an application to State Department of Commerce, especially in this internet and high-tech arena and incubators. And you were successful in getting $250,000 from them. They were also successful in getting another $150,000 from AT&amp;T for outfit of that space and therefore the eMERGE program came along. And so that's kind of with some of the background. And then from that point, you began to move forward with the budgeting and your own economic development initiative. Since that time, we've hired Glenn Breed to be your Economic Development Director and the whole idea of that space changed to be not only the eMERGE program and cultivate you entrepreneurs and economic development, but let that be the headquarters of this much bigger economic development initiative and move your economic development office there. Now, that bit of a background, I want to recognize there's been a very strong team in place to meet the deadlines of the State Department of Commerce grant, which is to have all their money spent by the spring of next year and also AT&amp;T's requirement is that the money be invested in the facility by the end of this year. And that team would be, and I will start up here with council members, Don Chapman and Buck Roberts have given unselfish of their time to meet, to get us to this contract. And what you're gonna do tonight is, what you're being asked to do, is to award a design bill contract in the amount of $414,906. The design bill team is a combination of Matrix Construction, a local construction company, and also McMillan, Pazin, and Smith Architects. Pazin, and Smith Architects, and then they're represented by Hugh King and Holt Ivy here. Y'all stick hand up. There's Craig. Y'all know Craig's been with us, and our economic, uh, I'm gonna get to William over here. Williams, uh, uh, with, uh, uh, McMillan, Pazin, and Smith. He's kind of in between our team of Glenn, Arlene, and Ruth Ann. I won't exclude Linda. She's certainly been involved in the process, too. So, this group had, basically went through an RFQ process, selected, uh, Matrix and McMillan, and then began to define the scope of this project. And again, I can't thank, uh, Don and, and Buck enough for their expertise in architectural and construction to kind of oversee this process. So, all that said and done, what you're being asked to do tonight is award this contract four-hundred-fourteen-thousand-nine-oh-six. It will upfit five thousand of the ten thousand square feet in the parking garage, uh, with eMERGE in your economic development office, and I think you've had a chance in the, in the, in the, in the documents sent to see the, you know, or previous in some, in some meetings, see the footprint of the, of the plan. So, with that, I'll hush and see if you have some questions, and we certainly have, uh, folks with a lot more expertise than I do in, in this process. And the goal is, right now, again, uh, we hope to have, uh, these people in March. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, sir. Good recap. I know we've all been, um, involved in this from when we started doing this. I'd like to thank, um, Representative White, who was, um, very instrumental in, in, number one, starting this program, uh, throughout the state, and, uh, Bobby Hitt in the Commerce Department really saw, and Amy Love saw the need for, um, um, the Commerce Department to, uh, really, uh, kind of focus in on the entrepreneurial spirit of this state. Having said that, I would, um, entertain any questions or comments. Mr. Roberts?
We looked at this thing a lot, really. We changed, they changed the floor plan around, which I think came out being a lot better than what the first design was for a lot of reasons. Uh, we got worried about the traffic on Murray Avenue, so we moved the offices away from the windows. We got four offices there that people's gonna be in every day, and there's a lot of traffic there, and you do get some noise from that. We went through it. Don and I went through this thing, I don't know how many times, but, uh, we saw some things in there that we could take out because, uh, we roughly took out, or we did take out, forty-four-thousand-six-hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? Is that right, somebody? So, it, it was things that we felt like that we didn't need in, in the very beginning. Some of it was furniture, some of it was in the construction end of it, too, but, uh, I think, uh, the architects have come up with a, a great plan, and I think it'll work. I think Don will agree with me.
Yeah.
Don might, let me say something.
Um, I know some of the things that we had done was, we, we relocated the entrance to the facility or to the, to the eMERGE site, which would be not from Whitner but from, uh, Murray Avenue, which reduced some of the cost of the ADA compliance because you have to come in on that level and then go down. Um, you know, the, the, a lot of the things that they have done to refine the cost, I think, the, I guess, the, one of the last comments that we talked about was making sure that we have, um, is there any, is there any unforeseen things that they would anticipate, because the last thing we'd want to do as a council is for it to come back and find out, as with other projects, that something got missed. Um, they feel very comfortable. We feel very comfortable that, that everything's been covered, and then, uh, uh, I think with the addition of some of the things from the outside with signage, and, uh, I think some opportunities that we're gonna look at with sound, and, uh, making sure that the, the HVAC system is, is designed to a level that it can accommodate, uh, you know, the, the, the occupancy load as well as the heat gain that would happen from Murray Avenue, because that's a all-glass structure on that side. But, um, with that, I feel very comfortable that they've, uh, they've, we've, we've all done enough to try to get it down as refined as best, as best as possible, and with that, I'd make a motion we accept it as the first reading.
Second question. First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Um, Ms. Stewart?
On the thirteen-point-one-point-one of this contract here, it talked about the, um, what the contract's gonna be along with the accepted value of engineer alternates, and it lists alternate one, two, three, four, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. What are those alternates?
Uh, those, those were some of the value engineering items that we, that we came up with over the past several weeks. Uh, we had an original budget of about four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, and we were able to trim that down through several options.
That's where that forty-four-six came in.
That's correct.
Yeah, and just to, just to cap, I think some of those was, um, there were some dirt walls, which are a, a type of wall system. Um, SEER rating was modified for the mechanical system, uh, some slider conference doors, resilient channels, uh, duct socks. There was a number of things that added up to about forty-four thousand dollars to value engineer it down, but still maintain the integrity of the space that the, that the architects designed.
This is a fixed contract, too.
Yes, it's, it's, it has a guaranteed maximum price.
It's gotta, with the guaranteed maximum, as long as we stick to what we've got here.
Uh, other question, and maybe a question for you, Frankie. Uh, this, um, standard form of agreement between the owner and builder design, I know it lists the owner as Innovate Anderson, and lists the, um, design builders as Matrix Construction, and I know we got a vested interest, the city of Anderson is, in what's happening out there, and basically what this contract tells me is that any, changes can be made to whatever happens. They don't have to come back before us, uh, that they can just go make a change, because it says, "All changes in the scope of work shall be priced and agreed upon by the owner and the design builder." Where the owner is Innovate Anderson, according to this contract, the city of Anderson's not anywhere on here, so how would that come back to us?
My sense, we have an understanding with the Innovate Anderson, that, that we're okay, everything, although the, through, my, through the grant, they're, they're the ones that are...
But if they wanted to make a change, it doesn't, this, this gives them authority to make any change without coming back before us.
There's another agreement, is a memorandum of understanding, is that they will not do that without your permission.
And that, and that is where?
Huh?
And we've been presented that memorandum?
You proved that probably two, three meetings ago, or, or maybe a month ago.
Okay, and it'll be attached to this agreement, I guess?
We can, we can get it to you. I mean, it's a, a separate agreement, but the two make the project work.
Oh, I have any other question? Anything else?
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm relying heavily in, in, on Mr. Roberts and Mr. Chapman. They're experts, and I've got a lot of confidence in both of them, and so, well, I'm, I'm pleased they've looked at that closely. I appreciate the efforts.
I agree. Anything else? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you for all involved. Appreciate it. Look forward to the work. Before we move into administrative briefing, we got some students here. You ladies are from where? Who's gonna speak?
Oakwood Christian.
Oakwood Christian. You doing community service work or steady work?
Um, we have to come to a city council meeting for government's class.
All right, we welcome you. Hope you learned something today. Administrative briefing, Mr. Moore?
Only the calendar, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, this Thursday night will be the, the last of the block parties. We certainly appreciate, uh, all the folks, Kerry Jones and Jeff Waters and his team. I'm sure there's more that go on to make that, along with the city folks who combine for a nice public-private partnership. So, as we roll into November, a couple of things to look for on your calendar. This coming Sunday's the All Saints Day, and we're pleased to say that it'll be at 3:00 PM for the first time in the Westview Cemetery. And I know there are a lot of proud folks, uh, to have us over there, not only Dr. Thompson, but a lot of people in her community that, uh, have waited so long for this project. Also, as we move on into the second week, certainly important for us all to remember Veterans Day. There'll be a Veterans Day parade downtown at 3:00 PM. Even though that's another organization doing that, the cer, certainly the city is closely involved with traffic control and even part of the parade, so if you need some more information on that, just let us know, and the city will be recognizing Veterans Day on Tuesday, November the 11th. Last couple of things, um, is that the thirteenth, the Municipal Association Meeting, the Anderson County Municipal Association Meeting, uh, will be, um, hosted by Williamson. Right now, we're, we're planning on, because the holiday week and the second meeting falling during Thanksgiving, the possibility of not having a council meeting, but again, it could be dictated by something that needs to come up. And, um, if I could, I, I think it would be all right. It's not on your calendar, because, uh, it's, it's not a part, but, uh, we're certainly pleased that Mayor Roberts is the president of the Municipal Association, that the city of Anderson will be hosting the, the Municipal Association of South Carolina's Board Retreat in your downtown, starting Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and, uh, is this Friday or next one?
Uh, the seventh, yeah.
Next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the, uh, seventh and eighth and ninth.
Right, yes.
That is quite an honor for, uh, mayors and council members from all over the state of South Carolina to be here, staying in downtown LeBlakely and another combination of, of things that, that our downtown people have helped packaged up, to be able to host an event, a forty-some-odd delegates, so this'll be big.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all we have. We do have one item in executive sessions, personnel matter regarding municipal courts. We are certainly hopeful that you will come out and take an action after, um, hearing from your city attorney.
Great. Um, before we go into executive session, I would encourage everybody to vote Tuesday on the, on the fourth.
Action day.
Anybody can listen or listening to me, exercise your right to vote. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
No move.
Uh, first by Mr. Buck Roberts. Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand in executive session. I'd entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
No move.
First by everybody, second by...
Everybody again.
Everybody again. First by Mr. Roberts, second by drive Peggy crazy, the Mayor Pro Tim. We, um, in the executive session, we did discuss a personnel issue in regards to, um, three individuals that would, uh, be engaged to, um, help Judge Madison out in regards to municipal court. I don't know if we want to give a quick recap of that before...
I'd be glad to do it, Mr. Mayor. I mean, what we're doing is you're appointing, uh, it's actually two positions of assistant judges, serve on a temporary basis per your ordinance, and those two positions would be, one of the positions is actually a law firm that will alternate their attorneys, and that's the Thompson-King firm. So, you would be appointing Richard Thompson and, uh, Private King, and then you'd also be appointing, uh, Josh Allen. So, those three would sit probably every other week to hold court once they're trained. So, we'd ask, it's the recommendation for the motion to be, to appoint those three individuals on a temporary basis as assistant judge.
Comments, questions? Ms. Stewart?
I'd say I'd like to make a motion that we appoint three temporary, part-time judges, uh, Thompson and King and Josh Allen, uh, to serve in our court system.
Second.
Uh, first by Ms. Stewart, second by Dr. Thompson.
And just for clarity.
It's Curvin.
What we're talking about really is having a pool of assistant judges, and there'd be three people, and they'll schedule as need be to fill the time that needs to be filled, but it's not gonna be like they're all gonna be down here every day, so I just want to make that clear to the person that may be listening.
Other comments?
I think it's a good thing, and it gives, it will give our present judge a chance to get a little relief.
I agree. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Uh, first by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.